Good evening and welcome to the Crestwood School District Board of Education's Regular Business Board Meeting for Monday, March 22, 2021. At this time, I'm going to ask that you please stand for our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Najah, did we take a role for the closing of our study session? I missed that, didn't I?
Well, you said all those in favor, we also said.
Said aye, okay.
We did not. For starting our regular meeting.
All right, then would you please take role for the, our business meeting?
Mrs. Berry?
Here.
Ms. Elzayat?
Here.
Ms. Falaz?
Here.
Mr. Garcia?
Here.
Myself, Ms. Kaminsky?
Here.
Mr. Sabah?
Here.
Mr. Chair of the Forum.
All right, and Najah, if you wouldn't mind, the reading of our consent agenda.
I recommend the Board of Education. The Board of Education approval is recommended for the items listed on the consent agenda, which include the March 22, 2021 Board Agenda, the minutes from the study session on Monday, March 8, 2021, the minutes from the regular meeting on Monday, March 8, 2021, and the minutes from the special meeting on Thursday, March 11, 2021.
Okay, so we have a motion from Najah that the Crestwood Board of Education approval is needed, I'm sorry. The Board of Education approval is recommended for the items listed on the consent agenda, which include the March 22, 2021 Board Agenda, the minutes from the study session on Monday, March 8, 2021, the minutes from the regular meeting on Monday, March 8, 2021, and the minutes from the special meeting on Thursday, March 11, 2021. Support was by Nadia, correct?
Yes.
Although, I'm sorry, anyone have any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by stating aye. Aye, any opposed?
Nay.
Was that? Yeah, but were you able to record that? Okay, all right.
Ms. Elzayat?
Yes.
Ms. Falaz?
Nay.
Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
Myself, yes, Ms. Kaminsky?
Yes.
Mr. Sabah?
Yes.
All right, and the motion passes, thank you. All right, and with this, now we are going to move into our business section, and I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Morgan.
Thank you very much. Action item number one, approval of requisitions. The attached list of requisitions are items that buildings or departments would like to purchase for their upcoming needs. The requisitions have gone through all the appropriate approval processes and have been approved by administration for purchase. In addition, there are funds available to make the purchase. Once the requisitions are approved, they will be processed and purchase orders will be sent out.
Mr. Chair.
Sue?
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the requisitions as per attachment for A1.
So I have a motion from Sue with support, was that Najah?
Yeah.
From Najah that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the requisitions as per attachment for A1. Are there any questions?
Yes, one.
Mr. Mo?
Just a large item, purchase of time clocks. Is that, are we still on the digital? What are we doing? Is this done through each individual teacher's classroom sign-in? How are we, what is this for? Which employees, is my question, I guess?
Of course, we currently do not have a time clock system. It's all paper and pencil. So we would be installing time clocks into all the buildings so that all of the hourly employees would be able to punch the time clock and have accountability for audit purposes with our auditors.
So is this digital right through our QuickBooks? Is that the way it works?
The digital will go through Frontline, which then uploads into our smart software system for time entry into our financial database.
Thank you.
Of course.
All right, hearing no others, all those in favor signify by stating aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes.
Thank you. Number two, approval of 2020-2021 budget amendment. Administration is requesting that the Crestwood Board of Education adopt the amended but amended 2020-2021 budget as presented in attachment for A2. This amendment recognizes staffing changes which have occurred throughout the year, additional capital outlay purchases, reduction of expenditures due to virtual learning and realignment of expenditures into appropriate classifications. The budget allows the district to address high need areas in order to move forward, creating a small increase to fund balance.
Mr. Chair.
Nadia?
I move that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the 2020-2021 amended budget as presented in attachment for A2.
Support.
And I hear support from Sue, a motion from Nadia that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the 2021, correction, 2020-2021 amended budget as presented in attachment for A2. Are there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by stating aye. Aye. Any nays?
Nay.
I'm going to start taking role call for each one. So, Mrs. Berry?
Yes.
Mrs. Elzayat?
Yes.
Mrs. Falaz?
Nay.
Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
Myself, yes, Mrs. Kaminsky?
Yes.
Mr. Sabah?
Yes.
Thank you. Number three, award technology E-Rate bid. The Crestwood School District qualified for E-Rate funding, which is federal funding used to update and maintain technology infrastructure within school districts. In order to utilize the funds, districts must bid out the allotted items and can only focus on specific items. On February 23, 2020, the Crestwood School District accepted bids for the following wireless access points, firewall, network electronics, smart net, and uninterruptible power supply UPS units. The attached results were analyzed by the district, Technology Department, and Wayne Reset. After reviewing the bid submissions, the administration recommends that following companies are awarded the bid. For wireless, Delta, three-year license for a total of $51,102. Firewall, Delta, for a three-year license for a total of $54,123. Network Electronics is in a comp for a total of $10,740. UPS Units, in a comp for a total of $6,305.
All right, we're just having a...
I'm sorry.
I hear the call for the motion from Sue.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the frontline software as presented per attachment for A7.
And I hear support.
You skipped the page.
Yeah, that's, should be, this should be number...
Oh, I read the wrong one.
Should be number three, for A3. So, and yeah, just, and just my apologies. So the sidebar was is that the information that we received is not in order, which makes sense because the Friday packet was not in order. So this is not in order.
I don't have that one at all.
So we...
No, that's...
So we, 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 we're following you in regards to the actual, actual reading of...
No, but I recommend that the Crestwood School District... Thank you.
Yeah, the chair.
Thank you. Award the contract for the E-Rate proposed bid per attachment for A3.
So I have the, I have the reading from, I'm sorry, the motion from Sue, support from Nadia that the Crestwood Board of Education award the contract for the E-Rate bid per attachment for A3. Are there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by stating aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Okay. We'll probably need a copy of this, that's what we're... Oh, now she...
We're having fun tonight, it's okay.
Okay, so, we still have to do a final vote, correct?
Mrs. Berry?
Yes.
Mrs. Elzayat?
Yes.
Mrs. Falaz?
Yes.
Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
Myself, yes, Mrs. Kaminsky?
Yes.
Mr. Sabah?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, motion passes.
All right, and the motion is passed. Okay, now we're moving on.
Okay, number four, approval of direct energy contract extension. Currently, the district is part of an energy consortium through direct energy in order to save electrical and heating costs. By participating in the consortium, the district has the ability to purchase resources at a fixed rate. The district is currently under contract through May 2025. By approving the attached amendment, we will be able to secure pricing through May 2026.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the contract with direct energy through May 2026 per attachment for A4.
Motion from Nadia?
Support.
Support from Sue, that the Crestwood Board of Education... My apologies, we're going to go back and forth here. The Crestwood Board of Education approve the contract with direct energy through May 2026 per attachment for A4. Are there any questions? Uh, Mo?
I had asked you prior for the delivery charges to, to ensure that the rate is a real rate in comparison to what a DTE rate would be with delivery charges already included. I didn't receive anything.
I apologize that I did not hold that because I completely forgot. I will be honest, I'm sorry.
I, I, okay. I would motion we table this, to be honest with you. Do we have time to table this? We don't have the exact rate.
Okay.
I thought we discussed...
We don't have the exact cost.
On here.
On this, but because we don't have the delivery charges that DTE would charge direct energy to bring us the energy. Because there is still a third party that we're dealing with that has to pay the origin to bring the energy to us.
So you're, so you're looking at a number in between this 5562?
If this 5562 is direct energy and DTE is .61, but they're charging .6 for delivery, then we're actually a .65 and not .61. So what I'm saying is the rate would be higher if we had the delivery charges in here, which I did not receive.
Okay, what is our timeframe?
It's, it's fine to go into April.
Into April?
Yep.
Okay.
I will have that for you this week.
Thank you.
Okay, so...
Sorry, I should have reminded you, I just...
Do you want to, um... Send it out electronically, or do you put it in the Friday?
I can put it in whichever way you would like it.
Okay.
I would prefer, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt. No, no, I would prefer a separate email to the entire board with that so it doesn't get mixed up in any...
Okay.
That's fine.
Could you, could you please, if you could, for the sake of the board, please include the breakdown of the cost to show a direct reflection of what a DTE rate would be and what a direct energy rate would be with the delivery charges?
Of course.
Thank you.
So we have a motion on the table, and what we're going to need to do is I'll need to have the person that motioned, which was Nadia, uh...
I can, I, um...
Motion to table this. Sue, will you support that?
Thank you.
So Penny, then, we're, we're just going to move to table this to the next meeting, which will be after the holiday.
Not a problem, and I do apologize.
Nope, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so now we're going to move on to the next part, which is item number for A, it's still Penny.
Five, we're still on five.
Four point five, yes.
Five, approval of train contract. Crestwood Administration has been working with Train over the past several months to finalize the scope of work and details of the contract. The attached contract has been reviewed in great detail by attorneys at Trum Law, Mr. Scott Jacobs, and myself. We have held several conference calls with Train to verify all the details in order to make sure we are comfortable and aware of everything that will be covered in the contract. The total amount of work will cost the district approximately $2,625,000, which has been allocated in our general fund budget over the next 20 years. The work includes replacement of lighting, plumbing, heating, and other miscellaneous energy-saving projects.
Mr. Chair.
Nadia?
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the contract with Train as shared.
Support.
And we have support from Sue. So that, a motion from Nadia is that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the contract with Train as shared. Are there any questions from the board?
Comment, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Nadia.
The nice thing about this is that it's not going to cost taxpayers anything, and it's update, updates and energy-efficient things that need to be done. And I just want to say that my faith is in Scott because I know that he went through this contract diligently. I was nervous about it because I didn't take the time that he took. Um, he knows. So I just want to say thank you for doing that because then it takes the burden off of me in making the right decision when I vote on this.
Also, I think it's, this, this is critical because as Scott had mentioned in the study session, it's, it's critical needs. And, you know, these are things that will help in, in sealing the envelope, the building envelopes, and making sure that everything's secure. So to me, it's very important as well. Are there any other questions, any comments? All right, all those in favor signify by stating aye. Aye. Any opposed?
I abstain.
Okay, so...
Take role call, Mrs. Berry?
Yes.
Falaz?
Yes.
Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
Myself, yes, Mrs. Kaminsky?
Yes.
And Mr. Sabah?
Abstain.
Okay, Mr. Chair, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number six, approval of borrowing resolution for energy bonds. In order to secure funding to complete various energy products throughout the district, administration would like to borrow approximately $2.6 million through energy conservative conservation bonds. By doing this, the district will have the ability to spread the cost of the desired renovations over the next 20 years without asking community for additional funds.
Mr. Chair.
Nadia?
I move that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the attached resolution for energy bonds. See attachment for A6.
So I have support.
Support.
So I have support from Najah that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the attached resolution for energy bonds. See attachment or per attachment for A6. Are there any questions? Hearing seen, none. All those in favor signify by stating aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none?
Mrs. Berry?
Yes.
Mrs. Elzayat?
Yes.
Mrs. Falaz?
Yes.
Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
Myself, yes, Mrs. Kaminsky?
Yes.
Mr. Sabah?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, motion passes.
Thank you. All right, and I think you got number seven, here we go.
All-day event for me today. Approval of frontline software. Crestwood Administration has slowly been transitioning all of our online platforms to frontline. In order to fully transition, we have two final pieces needed. These products are professional learning management and employee evaluation management. Professional learning management will allow the district to have necessary online training such as bloodborne pathogens along with hundreds of other permanent training. This will replace our current system, which is limited. The costs for the systems are comparable per year, creating a cost-neutral transition with more opportunities. Employee evaluation management will allow the district to change the evaluation platform. The district currently uses Stages for Success. However, the system has proven to be slightly cumbersome and limited to our needs. By moving to the new platform system, all of our data will be on one platform and easily accessible. In addition, this platform transition is well for our required state reporting. The costs for this system are comparable per year, creating a cost-neutral transition with more opportunities.
Nadia?
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the frontline software as presented per attachment for A7.
Support.
And I have support from Danielle that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the frontline software as presented per attachment for A7. Are there any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, I have one hand up here, then I'll call on Salwa, so Sue?
Just a comment, really. I want to say that I think this is long overdue, and I'm really glad that this is a cost-neutral proposal, so thank you.
Salwa?
Will they have tech support for us? Or is it our tech team that supports any issues with the software or any of those things?
Frontline provides us with the transition and implementation, professional development, and then if there are continued problems throughout, then we currently work with them so they do support our system with those problems.
So, so they'll be responsible for correcting anything? Not, it won't just fall like on our tech people?
They'll be responsible for the majority of it. We will be responsible for data input in that aspect of it, but for the actual software itself, they're responsible.
All right, thank you. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mrs. Berry?
Yes.
Mrs. Elzayat?
Yes.
Mrs. Falaz?
Yes.
Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
Myself, yes, Mrs. Kaminsky?
Yes.
Mr. Sabah?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, motion passes.
Right, thank you. Mr. Chair? They, um, Dr. Masalim, yes?
I just wanted to mention something really quick with this business report. There's a lot of items that the board has reviewed, and Trustee Sabah, we will get you that information within the next 24 to 48 hours, I assure you. But what I do want to state is that Mrs. Morgan and Dr. Lazar have really worked hand in hand to tie in financially what we need as well as the student and staff support piece. And I want to state to the community, something that I promised when I came in as superintendent, and something that I will continue to maintain my promise. We will find every avenue to save as much money as possible to upgrade and keep, be preventative with our district, but moreover, we will spend money where it's going to help our students grow. And we are going to continue doing this. And we are going to continue working as a team with the city and the county and other districts so that we can support the growth of our district, but at the same time, do it in a manner that is cost-effective and not ask the taxpayers for too much out of their pocket to help us move forward. So I want to thank the board, and I want to thank the community, and I want to thank the team for their, their due diligence in this process.
Absolutely, thank you. Penny, thank you very much for bringing all of this information as well as keeping the board updated through the course of the last several months. These were no easy feats. It was a very lofty and a lot of information that followed. Scott, I know, is gone, but thank him. And also thank Gwen for providing, you know, the, the updates via electronically so that we could view those, so...
Of course, thank you.
We got some big stuff behind us now.
We do.
All right, so with that, I will now, I think it's Dr. Lazar.
Yes.
Yes.
Mine is easy, I think.
I think so.
So the only motion that, action item we have in personnel today is for the appointment of a PE teacher for Riverside Middle School. The motion is for the recommendation to hire Mr. Brian Turk. Mr. Turk has a Bachelor of Science degree from Wayne State University and a Master's degree in the art of teaching from Mary Grove College. He has over 15 years of teaching experience, experience in physical education, working with grades K through 12, and has coached both basketball and volleyball. There's a quick correction here, though, that should say step four. Sorry, it can go as a typo.
I have, wait, um...
It says three, it should say four.
It says four.
Does it? Oh, mine says three.
Yes.
Oh, three, I apologize. I thought I, I thought I resubmitted, I corrected the typo.
It says four here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair?
All right.
So, okay, so, so we're good with the four, but let's get the motion on the table first. Nadia?
I move that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Brian Turk according to the CFT contract. MA, step three, effective...
Step four.
Sorry. Step four, I apologize. I should know that because it says it in here, but I apologize. MA, step four, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law.
Second. Okay, so I heard support from Najah. Okay. That the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Brian Turk according to the CFT contract. MA, step four, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law. Are there any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Nadia?
You hit a home run with this one. This kind of experience and credentials. Very proud to see this kind of experience coming to Crestwood, thank you.
I, I did have a question, so is he replacing? Because I know, I'm, I'm trying to think of the coach that's over there. Well, I remember Ms. Pinto was there, and I can't think of the other gentleman that's there. Yeah, it's here, yeah, Pinto is here. Oh, so we're adding a third, okay, thank you. Thank you.
Aiden, do the enroll.
Yeah.
Gotcha, there we go. All right, all those in favor signify by stating aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Okay, take role call, Mrs. Berry?
Yes.
Mrs. Elzayat?
Yes.
Falaz?
Yes.
Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
Myself, yes, Mrs. Kaminsky?
Yes.
Mr. Sabah?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, motion passes.
All right, thank you. And thank you, Dr. Lazar.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. And now, a few.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, board, community. Just got one action item with some informational items this evening. So our first action item is, the board must, every, every 30 days, vote on our current COVID-19 planning. So, action item is continuation of the 2021 Reintegration Plan. On February 22, 2021, the Board of Education approved the 2021 Reintegration Plan through the end of the 2020-2021 school year with review at the second school board meeting of each month.
Nadia?
I don't want to hold the phone. Do it, can you?
Did you call?
Mr. Chair?
Danielle?
The Crestwood Board of Education, I, I moved that the Crestwood Board of Education approve to continue the Reintegration Plan through the end of the 2020-2021 school year with review at the second school board meeting each month.
Support. Don't do that?
All right, so we have the reading from Danielle with support from Nadia, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the continued, continue Crestwood Board of Education approved the continued, continue the reintegration plan through the end of 2021, 2020, correction, 2020, 2021 school year, uh, with a review at the second school board meeting of each month. Are there any questions? Hearing and seeing?
I just.
Yes, Nadia?
I mean, uh, we saw it in action, you know, when we went into the building, if I may say, and I was happy with what I saw. Kids were really enthused to be back. The big thing was how excited the Hillcrest parents was lined.
Oh, my gosh.
Oh, my God, I mean, I could see. Ms. Saad, Ms. Saad, poor thing, she was, she had a whole crew out there, but it was really exciting to see how excited the kids were. Yeah, and staff, yes, yes, they were really enthused.
Yeah, I, I was going to comment that at the end of board comments, but. Yeah, she is, she's taking it all away. All right, uh, so we have all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mrs. Berry?
Yes.
Mrs. Elzayat?
Yes.
Mrs. Spouaz?
Yes.
Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
Myself, yes, Mrs. Kaminsky?
Yes.
Mr. Sabah?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, motion passes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, board. So some informational items, first off, yes, to go back to the reintegration plan. Um, I was very excited to actually be in schools this week, see kids, talk with staff. Uh, you are right, the Hillcrest line was all the way back to Warren Avenue, but you know, I want to give our parents a big, uh, thank you for their patience and their support in this process. This wasn't easy, but you know what, everybody, we, we, what's that old saying, you know, it takes a village to raise a child. We truly in the Crestwood community have risen up together in this process. I want to thank all of our administrators, our teachers, custodial, lunch, everyone. Everyone stepped up, uh, during the pandemic, during this current reintegration plan, and I appreciate everyone's consistency, but most importantly, I appreciate everyone's constructive criticism, the ability to have conversations and to get better. You know, there's an old saying we used to have growing up, Lloyd Carr, former University of Michigan coach, I learned this from him when I went to, you know, Michigan football camps, he used to always tell us, you don't get better, you get worse. Therefore, we're always going to improve. So I want to thank everyone for this reintegration. Um, also, I want to let everyone know that we are in the process of preparing for a, uh, volunteer optional summer school program. We're hoping to have about 10, 10 plus teachers, part of a committee that's going to put together what this program is going to look like. This isn't going to be like a strenuous program, five days a week, six hours a day. It's literally going to be focusing on the social, emotional and focusing in on some of the crucial areas that our students missed that created the gap during this pandemic. So this will be free, this will not be, um, a, a pay for event. We will be covering it with our grant funding as well as, as our money that has come from the federal government. So that's in the planning stages, be prepared, more information will be coming out. What I'd like to say next is we made some movement, we received seven bids for an architect firm. Mrs. Morgan has put together a rubric that her and Mr. Jacobs are reviewing to narrow down those seven to the top two to three, where in turn I will sit and look at that as well with Mr. Jacobs and Ms. Morgan to identify two architect firms. Why? Very soon, we will be in conversation and working with the city as well as our partners to identify how we can expand our infrastructure as a school district. Our school population is growing. We are over and close to, if not more than 4,100 students. This is up over 150, 160 students in one year for our district, and that is in the elementary setting. So that is students preschool, I don't want to say preschool, I can't say specifically yet, but kindergarten through third grade, which means that if we create an environment that these families love, they will be with us through graduation, and that's our goal. And to do so, we have to expand our infrastructure. So we will have a couple of those architect firms ready to go for the board to vote on very, uh, at the next board meeting, and we will be reaching out and having our conversations with our partners in the city. City, a, a community's success starts with its children. And if our school district is premier, which we are and we will continue to be, our city will blossom. So I want to thank all of our partners in the Dearborn Heights City as well. I also want to remind everyone that spring break is next week, March 29th through April 2nd. Uh, don't come a-knocking because I'm gone. Uh, but no, I'm, I hope, I'm hoping everyone gets some rest that week. The whole county of Wayne closes down at the same time, so all school districts in Wayne County will be on spring break. What I'd like to say is if you do choose to travel, if you do choose to travel, please make sure when you come back, if you have any signs or symptoms of COVID, get yourself checked out and stay home for a few days. But in order to help our community and our staff stay safe, that is why I appreciate the board's, uh, idea as well as support, we will be in a two-week pause upon return from spring break, which means that for those two weeks, from April 5th through April 16, um, students will have all virtual learning, five days a week during those two weeks to help and ensure the safety of all of our community and our students. Testing, so the federal government has not waived testing. Testing is going to be scheduled for April 13, 14, 15, and 16. This is the SAT, ACT, and PSAT. Information will be coming from Crestwood High School by Thursday, explaining the process, the dates, so on so forth. What I can say beforehand is this. Because the ACT, SAT, and PSAT must be done in person, it is optional for students if they choose to take the assessment, because families may not feel comfortable to send their children to take a test face to face. That is the only variance the federal government has given us. So therefore, more information will be coming from Mr. Fabris and the assessment team at Crestwood High School by Thursday, and it'll have detailed information. Mr. Fabris and I have met on this a couple of times already, and he's got a very good plan, him and his team. I do want to congratulate Zahrat Altuwaj for being accepted to St. Johns Hopkins University. This is another scholar of the Crestwood community and family that is going to be represented us at some of the highest levels of education. We are a hidden gem. We have so many of these students and there's going to be so many more of them showing what Crestwood is all about. Spring sports began today, so I want to give all of our spring sport athlete, student athletes a shout out. Um, I know some people have heard that the governor in her last conference stated that she would like, or she is requesting, and I'm not sure if it's requiring yet, I'm still looking into it, so don't quote me, but there is conversation that all athletes must be rapid tested before practice and before games. I will say this, that at this time, the Crestwood Schools does not have the manpower to do that at this time. We are looking at alternatives and we are waiting for more communication to come from Lansing in reference to any, uh, adjustments we can make. Just so everyone can be clear, wrestling, since the onset, has had rapid testing because wrestlers, according to the CDC guidelines, they are in close contact. All other athletes, according to CDC guidelines, are not considered close contact. So this is a change from Lansing that came to us last minute. We weren't prepared, no one in the entire state of Michigan was prepared for this, but we are addressing it and more information will come. Um, and two last updates, just again as a reminder, Tuesday, April 5th, the Monday we come back from spring break is a professional development day, so students do not have school that day, virtual or anything. Teachers will be in professional learning seminars as we've built into our calendar so that our teachers continue to grow and to, uh, be able to have as much success as possible with our students. And again, Tuesday, May 4th will be the next professional development day as well. Yep, so that is my update, Mr. President, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
I appreciate that. All right, so.
You have a question?
I have a question.
Yes. Salwa?
Dr. Musalem, you mentioned, um, summer school. Will that be 100% face to face or will face to face and virtual be offered for those students? And then will ingenuity be offered during the summer?
My apologies, the summer school program I'm speaking of is not credit recovery. This is a voluntary summer school program, so ingenuity will not be part of that. The credit recovery is something that will be separate, um, and it will be, uh, face to face. It will not be hybrid, it will not be virtual, it will be a face to face summer school.
For all grade levels, right?
It will be grades, kinder, current kinder, up through ninth grade. And possibly.
No, 10 through 12.
Possibly, but most likely K9.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Musalem, I'm just trying to wrap my mind around, you had mentioned 150 additional students in elementary, primary. Do we have numbers on secondary yet or?
It, it, my apologies, it's 150 approximately total?
Total, I'm sorry.
But, no, no, I did not clarify that, but I can tell you that percentage wise, 60% of them are in the K5.
Phenomenal, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
All right, again, thank you to our administration, and now we have one last item on the agenda before we go into, uh, our, our, uh, public participation, and that is from the Board Policy Committee.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, Nadia?
We had a meeting on Monday or Tuesday. What was it? Wednesday?
Wednesday.
Okay.
I only.
Last Wednesday, correct?
It was one of those five.
Right. Everything's, everything runs together. Anyway, um, there's a Crestwood School District Equity Plan that, um, is coming down from the state, correct? That we had discussed, that, that you guys put together so we can be in, um, line with state guidelines. Um, so that is what we looked over and, uh, the board members received this. So if we can just vote on it.
All right, then, what I would do is I'll entertain a motion.
Oh, Mr. Chair.
I, I heard Danielle.
Go ahead, Ms. Danielle.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education amend the Crestwood School Board Policy 1015 to include the Crestwood School District Equity Plan. See attachment 7A1.
Support.
In support from Najah, that the Crestwood Board of Education amend the Crestwood School Board Policy 1015 to include the Crestwood Board District Equity Plan of her attachments 7A1. Are there any questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um, so, yes, and, and looking at this, what is different? Like, don't we already have all of this, um, in place? Well, what, what's the change, I guess, like, what exactly are we voting on, putting it in the policy, but is this, does this not already occur somewhere?
Salwa, this is Danielle. No, no, it doesn't, but I'm going to refer to, um, Dr. Lazar so she can answer that fully.
Okay.
So, these are things that, um, we do have in practice, however, um, putting them in policy demonstrates our commitment to ensuring that they are happening continually and consistently. And it also, um, helps those who read the policy to see exactly what are some of the strategies that we have in place to, um, meet the needs of our under addressed populations. And, um, if you look at the measures for success on the, on the right-hand side of the chart there, it shows how we're going to measure our success towards them. Policy 1015 is just the mission, mission and vision statement. So even though there's a broad statement of our commitment to equity, it's not very specific. So all this, all this motion does is it adds this chart to the top policy, doesn't change anything in the policy, doesn't take anything away, it just adds this chart into that policy so that it's, um, transparent and, and available there.
And what's. Do, do we have definitive number? I see where you have the measures of success and then each item pretty much says increased or decreased for each item, uh, that it's referencing to the left. There's something more definitive of increased by 5%, increased by, you know, whatever, instead of just like.
So these are things that were not consistently tracked in the district previously, so we don't really have a baseline. Once this is in place and we know what things we want to specifically look for, we can collect data that will provide a baseline and then, um, on, on a yearly review basis, be able to communicate those things with the board.
Also, if I could, Dr. Lazar, the reasoning for Mr. Awada and for Mr. Fabris is so that, you know, they will be the persons in charge of gathering all of this information and data and so on and so forth, and be able to now move forward in providing us with the numbers that the district needs.
Correct, and, and part of those efforts are to put in place, um, stronger processes and procedures, uh, to track data and, and implement those things that were not currently present, uh, prior.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Najah?
Linda, I believe, Dr. Lazar, I believe you mentioned that, did somebody had, I'm trying to remember if it, somebody had asked you if our district had something? Is that, that's how it came about that you realized we didn't have anything in place? Okay.
To be aligned at a state level, and I wanted to add, if I could, Mr. Chair, that that's why the experts that were chosen to take this on, uh, with this data were chosen because we know that they're going to be capable to put this and implement all this stuff in place. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, can we get a vote? So all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, Madam Secretary?
Rick Rocco, Mrs. Berry?
Yes.
Ms. Elzayat?
Yes.
Spouaz?
Yes.
Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
Myself, yes, Mrs. Kaminsky?
Yes.
Mr. Sabah?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, motion passes.
All right, thank you. All right, and that moves us on to now our public comments. Before I do that, I just have to make sure I look at the Madam Secretary, and if you would not mind, please reading to the public our, oh. See, I didn't forget this.
Nope, it's okay.
Uh, our reading so that the public is aware of some of the rules, uh, in regards to addressing the board and the administration.
Yes, if I can pull it up for you, I guess I should have printed that.
My apologies.
No, it's my fault. There are no, oh, David.
David, you just, you ruined it.
No, no, but turning attention. Give me a second, it's getting better.
Oh, that's, I, I was, no, I felt bad too, because it's like.
Hold on.
Oh, jeez. Oh, okay. So with this, I will just ask, and I'll, and I'll start with, uh, Salwa, do you have any question? I'm sorry, any questions from the board? Salwa, we'll start with Salwa.
Uh, no, I'm good.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mo?
Oh, thank you.
All right, Danielle?
Thank you.
All right, Najah?
Really?
I'm just following.
Nope, I'm just glad that we are, you know, we had toured the buildings, um, during freshman orientation and got to see the little, it was, I'm not going to lie, the little ones, seeing the little ones in the building was probably my, my favorite part. And, and like you said, seeing the parents dropping them off, I'm not sure if they were excited because they were going back to school or because they were getting a break for a few hours, but either way, they were happy and, um, you know, anyways, thanks, I.
Nadia? Are you?
No, you know, I, I had the opportunity, and I haven't mentioned this, to, um, go over to food service and to, um, see all the hard work that they're putting in. And I have to say, kudos to them because they have been doing this while everybody has had the opportunity to work from home, they haven't had that pleasure. And I want to say they're doing a phenomenal job and they are the unsung heroes. Um, the other thing that I wanted to say is Dr. Musalem had said something that really resonated with me the other day, and that's when I knew that we were really heading in the right direction. And I could cry because he said this. He said that his son wants to attend Crestwood and become a Charger. Now, in the past, when I would ask certain individuals that would sit at these tables, and I'd say, would you send your kids to this district? They would say to me, no, because I live too far, they'd come up with different excuses. But when you said that, I mean, now I'm turning attention to red. But anyway, when you said that, it really hit a home run with me because I know that we're heading in the right direction and it means a lot, um, to hear that from you because I know that your heart is in this, and we would welcome him with open arms. The other thing, again, is the building visits, that was such an awesome thing, um, to see, and we even visited the Early Childhood Center. Um, and yes, that center does need updating, without a doubt. Uh, and congratulations to the wrestling team because, um, they have really, um, they're going to regionals. So they have, was it six, five or six?
They have five.
Five, yeah, and one of them happens to be my nephew, so I have to give a shout out to Amr. Congratulations, little buddy. So I'm happy to see that we are definitely heading in the right direction and thank you guys for all that you do.
I'm just going to take you back on that and congratulate Zain Bazey for winning the districts at 119, Anas Shalhut at 112, Hussein Toko took second, Mohakim took third, and Amr Jafar took fourth. Congratulations, young men, very proud of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sue?
No, I don't have much to say today, I know. Um, I'm just going to say that Dr. Musalem is always very gracious and he thanks his remarkable team, and you deserve all those kudos, but Dr. Musalem, you also deserve kudos.
Yeah.
So, uh, the changes that you promised, um, even during a pandemic are coming to fruition, and I couldn't be prouder, so thank you.
And I have the opportunity of speaking last, so. Oh, Najah?
I am printing.
It's going to be your screen saver.
I'm printing it out.
It's going to be your screen saver. I guess we'll need to have that as part of the board package. Anyways, um, I want to thank Dr. Musalem for allowing the board to tour the buildings last week. I know that we had spoken about it, but maybe they were a little surprised, but I think they were thoroughly, especially at the elementary level, they were really so happy to have us there. And although I don't want to take away from one school, but there was one school that they mean the staff and the parents were just like, wow, you guys are here, you know? Um, and it's important. I, I, I think we're an intricate part of your administration and this admin, and this, and this staff, making sure that our buildings are always at 100%. It was nice to be able to see, uh, the, the students back in the buildings. There were some that maybe weren't excited as others. Uh, but that happens from time to time. Thank you to, uh, Scott for attending and for providing us with that updated information. Thank you, Penny. And then one other note. For those that have been on the board with me, Sue can attest, I'm a huge PR person. I think that the only way to let our community know what we do is to show them. And there is no doubt in my mind that this school district and its staff, uh, from the teachers down to the students, their support staff and our technology staff know how to get it done. And, and, and it's just getting that information out there. So Najah and I attended the Thursday program, and when we did, they were showing a video. And I, of course, my wheels are spinning, and I'm thinking, I got to tell doctor you had left, and then that's when I had sent you the, the, the text message. I want to let the board know that within, and it was probably within an hour, because you said, I'm going to work on it right now, within an hour, they were able to get the videos from here and from the high school out on our cable channel. out on our cable channel. Because there's a lot of people, especially our seniors, that want to know what's going on in Crestwood. You know, they know we're here, they just don't know what we're doing. This is a huge piece, and, and I've gotten some information, I've gotten some calls and a few emails, and of course, uh, Danielle had posted up on social media, the Riverside one. Again, it's just a piece, or it's pieces, of a big puzzle, but it lets our community know what it is that we do. We, we, we're all intertwined, and the kids did this one. So hats off to the kids. But really, David, thank you so much. Kathy, thank you so much. I know, and I've spoken to the doctor about it. We will work together in making sure that when the time is right, your technology will be superior. There'll be no doubt that, again, we're a diamond in the rough. And in order to keep us shining, we have to be continuously polished, and that, you just threw a lot of wax on that diamond to polish it up because it's big for our community. So, thank you. Um, that's all I have to say. For those of you that are going to be celebrating for the spring break, I just echo the sentiments. Please be careful, please be safe. Uh, do what you got to do to protect yourself, and most importantly, your family, and then when you turn, return to school, our school district. So with that, I will entertain a motion for an adjournment. Oh, Najah?
Dr. Mussum, the, um, food service, the date is changing, is it Wednesday this week instead of Thursday? So, I know the time has changed as well, if we could just make an announcement on that? The food distribution. Sorry. We will be sending out a roll call tomorrow, tomorrow night. I'll make sure that goes out. Um, but the food, food distribution has changed to Wednesdays due to, uh, virtual learning and in-person learning.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, yes.
I'm sorry, I, I know you'd like to go last, but I did forget something. You're foreign. Um, if I could just say a special thank you to the Amity Foundation, to the Crestwood Board of Education, to Rite Aid, Sammy Shami, Hassan Hamud, um, for, uh, helping us get over 100 people in our Crestwood community vaccinated.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
I swear I wrote that down, but that.
Yeah, and to Mo Bejoun, Councilman Mo Bejoun.
Councilman Bo Bejoun, who came out and, and volunteered and, uh.
Was here, you were here, Najah, Nadia, the doctor was here, so yeah.
Thank you to all who made it happen.
Absolutely.
The, is the food pickup.
2:30 to 5:30 Wednesday for the food services. And if Najah, would you?
Thank you. Side cab, um, although I'm on cab, they kept it a secret from me as well. They gave board members each a really nice gift bag with a mug and some treats in there, so thanks to Cab for thinking about the board.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And, and Kristin, I know you're in the background, I know there's one here for Salwa. If, uh, if it can make its way to her home, that would be greatly appreciated. I'm sure she would appreciate, uh, some sweets, so, excellent. All right, with that, I think I can take a motion to adjourn. From Danielle, supported from Nadia, we are adjourned. Thank you, and have a good evening.